There it goes. It's now being taped. This is the July 23rd, 2014 meeting of the City Council Finance Subcommittee. I guess minutes from the prior meeting, you said you'll get at the next meeting.
On your third tape, yes.
Yeah, okay. Mayor's Communication?
Good evening. For those of you that don't know, I think some of you do, some of you don't, but this is Jane Zakwitz, right here. She is our new Director of Personnel with City. City Council will be voting on at your appointment Subcommittee in your next City Council meeting, but she's actually here on two different issues.
On Housing, I was gonna say. I just saw her at CPA for Housing, so.
She's the former Director of East Hampton Housing, so she's actually here on the CPA item on Housing, and she could probably explain that when she's...
Turn.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I'm in both positions. Excuse me, I'm in both positions right now.
Okay. They won't let her go, is the truth.
Is the truth.
So, what, her first official day was Monday, the 21st, and so this is her third official day here, and they haven't hired a Director yet because they refuse to believe that she's really leaving.
Really leaving.
But she has, so she's going to be helping them out in the meantime and staying on, but she's also here because this is one of her items on there.
Thank you. A public speak, is there anyone here from the public that wants to speak on something that's not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. We'll skip continuing business for now and move to new business. Why don't we take them in order, because I think the first couple there, for the other two councilors, I left the packets from, that were provided. We'll do the irrigation system first. This is a request for $900 for an underground irrigation system at East Hampton Community Gardens, and I believe we have a member of the public, is it Richard?
Yes.
Richard, if you want to just kind of give us a brief rundown of what the item is and what you're looking for.
For the past four years, we've put water throughout the garden by just running hoses along the top of the ground.
So there's a spigot out by the road?
There's an on-off valve right by the road, and then we've been running hoses across the surface. Well, up at Community Garden, it gets sun all day long, and if someone forgets to turn off the main valve, we, on several occasions over the four years, we've had hoses burst, and if there's nobody there, the water runs.
Because of the pressure.
Yeah, because of pressure, for some long time. By putting it underground, each station, there's now 13, we used to have only six stations for watering for 45 gardens, we now have 13, so hoses don't have to be driving as far, and each hose now has an on-off valve right at that station. So, our theory was, if people have a hose nearer their station, they're more likely to remember to turn it off right after they finished watering, right near where they're watering, and not as likely to forget to turn off the main valve. It also allowed us to have water put down near the end of the garden where we have room for 12 more plots at some time in the future.
That aren't open yet.
That aren't open yet, but that we've planned someday in the future, we think we will be using them.
What's the percentage of the current lots that are being utilized? I mean, I know it varies year to year, probably.
It does vary year to year. We, out of the five, this is our fifth year, out of five years, twice we've had it completely filled, and the rest of the time, we've had 41, 42 out of the 45 plots filled.
You probably know where to do it, it's up off Park.
That's right. I pass it nearly every morning with a great deal of envy that I wish I could have a plot there, but I haven't had the time to do that. My own garden, we haven't done, but it's a great site, it looks beautiful, sets a beautiful, a beautiful setup.
Not this year.
Pretty much. You said two out of the five.
I think we have 42.
Out of the 50 or something.
Out of 45.
Forty-two out of 45.
Well-cared-for, it's really, really a sharp-looking location. It speaks well for our community.
You're requesting $900, the total projects, $1163, refresh my memory, is that just money that you have from?
We bought the posts, and we provided the labor for installing the posts, and we bought a pressure gauge or something that was needed to hook up to the main on-off valve up near the road. And then, the 900 was basically for the underground installation and all of the hardware that's related to that.
And I believe the city provides the water.
And I did have a garden there last year. I don't know what occurred to me to pick last year of all years to think I was going to have a garden at the Community Gardens, and I can tell you that you've really gotten high-tech since I was there, because dragging that hose from the top and all the way over is a really big deal, and you do an awesome job there. He helps people, gives them information, but it probably just wasn't quite enough help. I really, I really enjoyed it there. It's run great, it's a great group, they're all, they all chip in and help out, and if somebody, you know, has a problem and can't get to their garden, they just end up helping out with it. So, I can tell you from experience that the water, having that is a huge advantage, and sometimes it seems easy to turn water off and on, but there was a whole little different thing to the lock, and I think so. I think it's, I think it's a great idea, and I do have a garden there this year.
Counselor, I just had, was trying to envision how you get people to turn off the water at the spigot when they leave, and as you say, having the spigot be closer to the actual garden is easy. Is there a place where you can just hang the little hose sprayer, I'm imagining a sprayer?
There are posts.
At the spigot?
At each post, of all the 13 posts we have installed, there are hose hangers, and there's an on-off faucet at each one of those spots, and then there's the main on-off valve up near the road.
Would you see that people would go to that spot and then hang up their hose and turn off the water?
And that's, that's what we're finding.
I think this makes a lot of sense.
Also, Risk.
I thought of something, and then I just lost it. Oh, who's paying for the water?
City.
We are? The city water?
You don't have any water there.
No, the city supplies the water.
Okay, I have no problem with that, I just wanted to know that they have to pay for that, because if the people are leaving it on, that could cost you a lot.
Correct.
I know this because my pool gets undermined.
Any other questions by the council, or anything, Jamie, Assistant Planner, you want to say anything? Now, we just come out of, just for this open space, or is this recreation?
This is coming out of the, it's coming out of the designated fund because at the time, the open space account was depleted.
But I mean, it is an open space item, CPA open space item.
Yes, because the CPA purchased the land when, CPA purchased the land, so it's still open to us.
Great, thank you. Any further questions? Entertained a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion by Counselor Risk, seconded by Counselor Kuzinski, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Richard, we've already set a public, I already set a public hearing at the last full City Council meeting for this item, so it'll be on the agenda August, I think it's 6th, the first Wednesday, so you're more than happy to come to that and answer any questions of the rest of the council, but we'll make a positive recommendation to the full council.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on, to the second item, which, it's Jane.
Jane, yes.
This is a, right, $2,000, excuse me, $27,500 for handicap access bathroom and ramp at the housing community room. This is the complex down by the community center, just beyond the community center.
It's right up at Foyle Street.
Right, that's, I always know it from the parade, we always have to cut through there, so. And I did take a ride down there, and I was dumbfounded when this, when Jane brought this to the CPA, that a senior housing complex would have, this is in the recreation building, in the meeting building, of the thing that they would have no handicap bathroom or ramp into the, to access, so you would have thought that when it was built, being for seniors, you would have access into there, and, but if you want to go a little, explain a little more, Jane, about exactly what you plan doing here and why, you know, we'd appreciate it.
Sure. Clicky Manor is a 91-bedroom unit development up at Foyle Street. There is a community room that is available to the public, as well as the tenants. It's used for, on a weekly basis, for bingo, there's a painting group that the Council on Aging sent over, they meet on Thursdays, there's several meetings, there's a couple card clubs, there's scouts use it, we have a lot of tenants that use it for family parties because the apartments are smaller, so they use the community room. Right now, there are handicap, there are non-handicap areas, there are just regular stalls for men and women, and we are taking, we are hoping to take a, what is now, I believe in the past, it was a, an office, it's now used for storage, converted to some closet space for the activities, such as bingo, we have a closet, painting group, we have a closet, and then the rest will be the handicap bathroom. We also, there is a ramp into the building, however, there is not an automatic door opener.
So, we open it there?
Right, so we'll be adding a door opener. When we add the door opener, that means we have to modify the ramp, because the ramp has to be leveled at the point of the button to open the door, and it has to have an awning over it, so we will have to modify both of the doors. The total cost is about $31,000. The housing authority would be paying a balance out of their general funds.
Counselor Kuzinski, or Risk, any questions?
It's absolutely great, and it's necessary. You should do it.
I agree with you. How about you, Counselor, if there are some plans on there?
I was just trying to look at the plans. There's a ramp already?
There is a ramp, but it has to be modified.
$31,000 for valves to have a door and an awning?
And a bathroom.
And a bathroom.
And a full bathroom.
The bathroom is approximately $19,000 for the bathroom alone, and then the...
Because we're converting a space that has no bathroom.
There's no plumbing.
There's no plumbing, there's nothing there.
Correct. The room next to it is the utility closet, which has the hot water heater, so it's not far from plumbing, but there is no plumbing in that, and it will be created.
Just trying to imagine what people did without this before, I mean, there are handicapped people on-site, there are handicapped people who need the facilities, who visit, who come to the various gatherings, I'm sure.
Definitely, definitely. It's just, East Hampton Housing Authority is self-sufficient, we don't get funding from the state, we pay all of our own bills out of the rent we collect, we're one of, I believe it's like 30 housing authorities in the whole state that are self-sufficient. So, when we do get money from the state, it's for capital improvement, but we're usually using that for window replacement, or roofs, or furnaces, so a project like this is something that's always been on the, yeah, we definitely need to do this list, but the funding hasn't, we haven't had available funds.
This is an affordable housing element?
Element.
I mean, that's coming out from CPA under affordable housing.
Or, I don't know if it will actually take, I know some of our accounts are down until the...
Well, I know, but I'm saying it qualifies.
Yes, but it is a qualified for affordable housing.
Yeah, but this one would come entirely out of the affordable housing.
Affordable housing.
Set aside.
Will I make a motion to approve?
Second. We have a motion to approve the $27,500 CPA funding for affordable housing, seconded by Counselor Kuzinski, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Jane, like I told...
Thank you, Jane, and welcome.
Thank you very much.
Like I told, Richard, I already set a public hearing on this item, and it'll be heard August 6th at the full City Council, if you're interested in, I mean, it'd probably be a good idea if you can be there, if not...
I'd be there for a while.
Oh, yes, you have to be there for a while. So, hopefully you'll be there.
She was already getting to us at the last meeting.
At the last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jane.
I didn't want to wait another month.
Moving on to our third item, which is a little larger appropriation, is...
Just a little.
Just a little. Is the $279,508 from the CPA designated fund balance for Whitebrook Middle School to construct the new football field. As you've probably heard the other two applicants, I didn't set a public hearing on this one because I thought maybe the councilors, I heard a lot of it at the Community Preservation, but I know you have plans and everything, and I thought it would only be fair to the councilors to, and I think I saw the plans being carted in here earlier.
They are, they're coming.
If you want to just sort of go over the project and...
Yeah, I just brought, I have a full set.
I know you have a whole set.
I have this exhibited.
Yeah, that's all we need. I think we saw a lot of this when you came through the design.
Yeah, I think this is very similar.
They already had this with the design presentation.
Right, because, you're right, they had it.
In essence, it's the same idea, improvements to the drainage system at the field, resurfacing of the field, basically taking the existing drainage system that runs around the perimeter of the field, which discharges to a low point on the northeast corner, and, you know, we've done studies, our diligence, we've, DPW has helped us kind of do some investigative work in the existing catch basins that were there, we've done survey, wetlands evaluation, we've permitted this project through the Conservation Commission, and we've engaged the services of professional soil astronomers to help us understand the soil conditions that are at the site, and how we can come up with the most cost-effective solution for improvements to the field as we have them today. So, we've done all this work, we've compiled, you know, a complete set of design drawings with details and written specifications that we believe are ready with some final details from the city, because it'll be the city that goes out to bid with it, and other than that, I think the upfront part of that work is completed.
And I know when you started this, you had hoped to start, or be up for the fall, and you realized the process was a little more lengthy, I guess, now, if you got the funding, would this be something you'd start next spring, or would you...
I think so. I think that's the only way it really works with us.
Would work, because I know you have to start it early so that it's ready, there has to be some time, I would assume, in between the time it's redone and the time you actually can use it for.
That's exactly right, and we want to have that amount of time available before we actually start, you know, using the field, so that the turf has some time to bind to the soils just at that interface. So, you know, originally, we had planned on kind of being on the construction now and finishing up, and that kind of was a real type of schedule ambitious, so we think realistically it makes the most sense to go out towards the end of the winter time and to, depending on the weather conditions, how, you know, how long the snow lasts, go out just as soon as, in the spring as we can, and we think that'll give us, you know, based on, you know, overseeing and the judgment of our ground, and so we think that's what we're looking for.
Is, did I hear you say you're going to replace all the turf? Is it sodded?
Yeah.
Sodded turf or seeding?
We have budget for sodding at this time, and we really have to, because if we seed it, we're not going to be able to use it for at least a year, I think. That's my opinion, you know, some people might tell you six months, but I think that's all kind of a, you know, how you weigh our priorities, I think that would be...
You would let it grow and prepare itself for at least until the fall, it wouldn't be used until the fall football season?
Yeah.
So, a year from now, we'd be hoping to have a...
Yeah.
Makes sense, I mean, I had to spend all this money and then start to sort of...
I hear you, and I think that's, that's kind of a flaw that a lot of people end up going down, then the field with the use doesn't have a great time to recover, so that's the idea.
I know in the CPA, there was some discussion, this obviously would be a field owned by the school department, so it is a city, that's, because a lot of times, the CPA looks for a little larger match, but in this particular case, because it's a city-owned project, it would be a city-owned field, and I know the principals here, and Mr. Roy, I think, is somebody who wanted to know who is going to be in charge of maintaining it, and I know Friends of Football do a lot of the fertilizing and help, but ultimately, it will fall onto you, Mr. Roy, correct, on the maintenance for the school department.
You would supervise Friends of Football, anything they did?
Yes, they go through me.
And the only other thing, maybe, I know the athletic director's here, also, there was also some discussion, if you could, for the councilors, about the number of, I guess, East Hampton residents that are on the teams versus, do we have those numbers at all? I mean, it wasn't a concern to me, I mean, I think it's because it's our field, I mean, it's...
Yeah, I mean, right now, East Hampton High School, East Hampton High School is the home team, because we have the majority of players.
Right, the majority.
Yeah, I don't have the exact...
Okay, and I know Friends of Football has mostly East Hampton also, but there's some from other communities.
Is this being used for soccer at all?
No.
You won't let it be used for soccer?
They have their own fields.
So, they have, they need it.
The upper fields on the other side of the tennis courts, at times, are used by soccer teams for practice.
But your field, your teams use the Nautalk Field?
Correct.
Okay. I was just saying that because somebody's questioning how many kids would use it, and I wondered if we had soccer in addition.
Because this is a...
It probably would be great, I mean, the thing you want to do is, one problem soccer has is that they overuse their fields in the spring and fall, so I would suggest that the football team not have somebody else overusing their field in the spring when they're accessing them.
I agree.
Because it's not really just about the high school either, it's, you know, we have...
And the youth football.
The youth football program's also used.
Oh, okay.
So, there's three teams from the youth program, two teams at the high school, the JV and the varsity team.
I would bet that that's enough East Hampton uses.
That's enough cleats, so.
I said it wasn't a concern.
Well, I'm, I think somebody was expressing at the CPA a concern that not enough residents, children are using it.
Or could there be, could we try to go out to other communities and get part of it to, like, get in?
Right, and the other thing to think about, it's not the number of kids using it in a one-year period, it's the number of kids that will be using it over the next 10 years, so it'll be thousands of East Hampton.
So, if I understand what you just said, CPA members were wondering if out of other communities could help fund it?
Right, that was, I think, I think that was their thinking.
West Hampton or Southampton, because there's football players from there?
Right.
I don't agree, because it's our pool.
I don't think our field will sustain that kind of use either.
That was kind of my feeling, Dan, that it's our field.
Well, I don't mean usage, I mean, because there's members on the football teams that are not city residents from Hampshire or other schools, therefore, maybe they were thinking they could contribute to the funding, but I don't agree that that's necessary.
And they do pay the, right, they do pay the athletic fee, even if they're not, I mean, if they come...
We get, because of the co-op, we get a chunk from the Hampshire schools, and the youngsters that play.
Pay a fee to all of them, so, I mean, they're, it's not like it's fee-based anyway. And Amy, Amy, right? I know one of the other concerns at CPA was the Friends of, was the danger to the student, I know the other fields kind of in, I don't know if you've had serious injuries, or you're just afraid of some, if you just want to mention that a little bit.
Yeah, well, you know, even Vito can talk to this, over the past few years that he's been here, the field has just deteriorated to the point where somebody is going to get hurt, there are divots that don't fill, there, the, there's no grass for cleats to hold on to, we've not had anybody seriously injured on it yet, although we did have somebody break their foot, but I think that was something totally different, but it just, and if we don't get this fixed, this is probably the last year that we can plan it. As it was this year, East Hampton Friends of Football has, we paid almost $1,000 to oversee the field, to patch the holes that were there, we're paying the, to have it mowed and maintained professionally, so, you know, we've already put in a fair amount of money, and we really, we did that just to make it through this year, but it needs to get, it needs to get fixed.
And what is, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
What is your contribution to the project? I know you're, you're giving a little bit of funding to it.
We are giving a little bit of funding, we have, we have pledged $20,000 to the, to the project. Obviously, we have some major fundraising going on right now that is earmarked specifically for field, if we go over that, you know, we would contribute for whatever we raise over and above that.
What's the total cost of the project beyond the CPA funding?
$324,000.
$324.
$324,508.
So, my math, quickly, we need some more funding, they're giving you 20, we have $279 coming from CPA.
$25 had already been issued.
Oh, that's already, that's included, the designed CPA.
So, really, there's about 300 left, and so there's about 16.
So, we're good, we're good, I just didn't know that you included the $25.
The other item that was brought up, if anyone wants it, in, was, some said, why don't we go with a synthetic surface like Williston has, pay the extra, but CPA funding, Jamie, correct, was...
Does not.
Does not.
It's prohibited for artificial turf fields and stadiums.
Right.
But it is allowed for athletic fields.
It is allowed for athletic fields.
Yes.
So, it could have been done for that.
No, not artificial turf, but you can...
CPA funds aren't allowed for artificial turf.
Right, or for stadiums, but this isn't a stadium, it's a field, so it's not the bleachers and the rest of that.
Having an interest in this and going through it, just as a side, I'll give this to everyone, because you'll have a year here for you, actually, I did read, when I was taking a little vacation on Cape Cod, and I was reading the Cape Cod Times, Sandwich kind of had a similar proposal, they, it was a little more elaborate, they were, I won't say it's a stadium, but it was a bigger sports complex, and they went to CPA, and they were told the same thing, that you couldn't put in an artificial turf, and so, they put it in front of the town for an override, and the town turned it down, but they did get the CPA money for everything but the field, and then, fortunately for them, their, their state senator is Teresa Murray, the president of the state senate, so she put a half a million dollars in the state budget for Sandwich, which is athletic field, so they got their artificial turf, that was paid for by the state directly for a half a million dollars.
Must be nice.
Right, and we actually researched artificial versus natural turf, and artificial turf doesn't last forever, they do need to replace, be replaced, and that, and we felt like we would be kind of saddling the future generations with replacing this, there's maintenance that has to happen, you have to spray antibacterial stuff on it, and I just personally, as a mom whose kid won't play on it because he doesn't play football anymore, but possibly had a kid that would have been playing on it, I don't know if I would want him on all of that fake stuff, and I just feel like natural turf, we've talked about possibly having a little sod kind of garden, and if we need to, we can cut a patch, we can put it down, and, no, it's sustainable, and it's natural, and, you know, I honestly, at first, I wanted turf, 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 but I, the more I've read about it and learned about it, I'm more comfortable with natural grass.
And again, I don't walk it as often as I'd like to, but I do walk the Williston track a little, and I know they're always out there with vacuums, because they have like, that artificial stuff, they put those little rubber pellets in there to keep it soft, and as it gets used, it gets out onto the track, and you always see about their vacuuming, their...
And then it ends up in your house.
Right. Carted in.
Yeah, and kids inhale it, I mean, it's just...
Go ahead.
In terms of the number of people that use it, it's great, it sounds like you have various levels of youth football.
And cheerleading.
And cheerleading, and the JV, and the varsity, so that all sounds good. The aspect of somebody coming from out of town and joining us, and they're paying a fee, I guess, to play football, an athletic fee, okay, their community isn't contributing to the football field, so I'm a little concerned, I have some concerns about, about that, if, especially since we're joined with Hampshire, right?
Yes.
Joined with Hampshire, because they don't have a stadium, or team, they don't have a team, they don't have a team.
We wouldn't have, neither high school would have a team, because, that's why we co-op, and that's why, and we have to get approved to co-op every two years, I think, based on the fact that we just don't, we would not have enough numbers, either high school, to have a football team without that, so that's just something to think about. There would just would not be enough numbers.
Wouldn't be enough for either, for either.
Right.
I think, just, just to counter that argument, I wouldn't want another community getting involved, we already have a hard enough time passing and dealing with issues in East Hampton without adding another community who would have the right to deal with issues in your football field because they helped pay for it. I think it's on our property, and it's our, it's our school property, and it's about our East Hampton kids needing to play. Yes, we invite another community's kids in, otherwise, we wouldn't be able to play, but I wouldn't want to have that, JP, I wouldn't want that other level of, you know, discussion, because then you guys are debating what to do next, and you have to debate it not just amongst yourselves, but with another community, you own the field.
Well, it's multiple communities.
Well, yeah, there you go.
You're not trying to be just teaming up with one.
Yeah, Southampton, West Hampton, or whatever.
It was an interesting concept that came up during one of the meetings, where, you know, an attraction like this with aid and student retention and, you know, maybe attraction...
Well, I think football does that, but it's, this to me is about safety, really, it's not just cosmetics, it's about safety, so it has to be done.
Was getting rid of the excess surface water is a strategy in keeping down muscular
muscular bone illnesses.
Well, that too.
An aspect of this project, I was thinking.
In terms of the access to the field, in, in terms of, we, we have no fees for the field for visitors, is that correct? North Hampton, in North Hampton, I remember, I remember in the seventies, sixties, you're paid to go to the football game, it was a minimal fee, but some.
High school, they do pay, yes, there is a, there's a gate.
At high school, yeah, there is a gate, okay.
But I, I believe if I recall, and Vito, you can probably go over this, I think what they bring in, they have to hire a police officer and maybe the custodian or something for the building, or the bathrooms that people have to access, so I think.
Basically.
A lot of the fees eats up, are eaten, eaten up, the fee to get in is eaten up to pay for the support, but there is a fee, I mean.
Football programs traditionally, especially if you can do Friday Night Lights, football programs can make money for schools, ours is still small, it's still growing, we're still trying to get the word out, it's hard, a Saturday afternoon game, it's hard to get people there, um, but if you could build some more community support, some more community involvement, a football program, a successful football program can actually make money for its athletics department.
That reminded me, I know there's no lights in your proposal, but did, do I recall that there's some wiring you're putting in or no? Did I, just in case in the future there was money or something, didn't you, aren't you going to wire something that, or like to run the conduit or something, so it's, I got, don't, you know, I'm not trying to put words.
No, you're right, um, you remember exactly right, we're having the, it's inexpensive to lay conduit down the center of the field now, and then in the future, we can fundraise and.
So you can pull the wire without having to pull the field up.
Right.
Or have to go all the way around the perimeter, so.
So they're going to put the conduit down through.
It's just an empty pipe until, that's great planning, not that.
Don't make me talk.
Funding lights, but that's another subject.
Well, WEEI has a, has a contest every year and I enter it every year.
Good luck with that.
Right? We need a good state senator who can give us some lights, please.
Usually in, in, with the, as you're saying, CPA projects, there's some other funding involved, would you use the CPA money as leverage to create other state, state revenues, federal monies, some other grant from somewhere, and so I'm very used to that, as not, as has to have the project be a supplement to some other source of revenue to fund the project, so this is, seems like most, almost all the money is CPA money in this, and that can raise, raises a concern of what other things are coming down the road for CPA funding, where are, what are our balances, uh, what other projects may be coming down the line, and also, what other sources of, of revenue you may have pursued and run up against a brick wall or may still be out there, should there not be an approval for full funding?
Sure, we actually hired a grant writer and he found one, um, it was a, one foundation out of Boston and we applied and we have not ever heard back, so, um, that was a professional grant writer who focuses on football grants.
Really?
But, uh, because of where we are, we don't qualify for NFL, the NFL has something called the, um, I can't remember the name of it, but they have a grant, the, they current it with USA Football, because we are, um, of our economic, East Hampton is too rich.
You're kidding.
No.
Too rich, not rich enough.
Yeah, we're a little too, and we're a little too far from Springfield, that's really their target, you know, I know they did, I think they did Chicagobe Highs or Chicagobe Combs or some other, like, put a million dollar field in over there, uh, but we've not been able to find any funding anywhere else, and I think there is some precedence, how much of a match was for the baseball fields that went in?
Well, you know, again, it might have been a little more, but again, and I was not against, again, my feeling on this is, this recreation is a new part of the CPA, and when we did the baseball.
Just changed a lot, yeah.
And I think soccer may be coming eventually, you asked what, what might also, because what actually came before the football, it was around all the same time, is soccer and baseball both came forward and CPA, both were around, might be in a slightly less two-hundred, thousand dollar range, and CPA said, well, we'll fund one, and they decided to do the baseball, but baseball was a little like Friends of Football, they did in-kind contributions of the dugouts and some of the fencing and, uh, what I think Friends of Football has done, and again, correct me, Amy, if I'm wrong, but aside from the twenty-thousand, there's ongoing maintenance that they supply fertilizers and they said they oversee, they do give stuff to the school department, and ultimately, I think the CPA's feeling was these are city-owned lands and not like it's somebody's, we're not giving it to them for private, private concern, so I mean, if someday the Friends of Football went away, it's still East Hampton's football field, so.
And on Whitebrook's property, Whitebrook's PE department uses it also, so it's not just about football.
The school department.
The school department, right. What the school PE, physical education, uses the field too.
In, in his terms of funding, Melissa can, I think the last we knew Melissa was around, and I know we haven't funded all the particular, um, affordable housing, but it's around two million dollars total for CPA?
Yeah, it's, I think it's a little over two million dollars.
That's pretty good fund, and we had about eight hundred thousand in projects, including this one, in the pipe street, didn't we? With, with, uh, baseball field, soccer, a number of other small ones, I thought I heard eight, I remember eight hundred thousand, I don't, maybe you have the figures.
So it's about, starting with about two million in the un, unappropriated, um, so the soccer's already been, which had baseball.
That's already been deducted?
That's already been deducted from those numbers.
Oh, okay.
What's on the table right now is the, um, the Old Town Hall, um, recently came in, um, filled in for.
Hundred and seventeen.
Yeah, a little over a hundred thousand, um, this project for.
Two seventy-nine.
Two seventy-nine.
And the two small ones, we just did nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
So it's, you know, we're, even after this project and the Old Town Hall, those will be.
Plenty.
A million or something like that, um, there will be a request for a match for the Mills project at some point, to the bike path improvements along that section of Pleasant Street, um, and Memorial Town Hall, three years as.
And as I said, JP, and I could be, you know, something else could come in, and at least, I think at some point down the road, soccer might come back looking for, that would be the last probably, because I think that would, and we don't have anyone here, Mr. Mason's representing him, but I think that would be if they, the soccer completed, they wanted one more field, that would pretty much make national, I'd probably, there's no more room, I mean, between the baseball and, there's very little room left out in there to, to do any more down there, so.
I can speak for John Mason, but yes, soccer will come back.
Yeah, I figured they might.
They, I, I think the feeling was that they were asked to allow the committee to fund the baseball project.
Right, I think that was the committee's thing, that they didn't want to fund them both at the same time.
Right.
But they did do, as I recall, the design was done for both.
The design work's already been done.
For both, right, but they only funded that half.
Well, because originally, they wanted that, they wanted them separate, then they wanted them together, and then they wanted them separate, so we wanted.
Personally, I'm happy that we're using the money, it's restricted, you can only use it in three areas, and the fact that recreation now is allowed to rehabilitate parks when before, all you were supposed to do is build a new park or something like that, this kind of renovation, to me, is necessary in the community because we don't have the money without CPA, and I love the fact that we're using it this way, and having two million dollars in there, it's actually bothersome to me, why haven't we, we've been using it, I'm glad these projects are coming, and lastly, I want to say, the CPA committee voted eight to zero unanimously on all these projects, I, I often support, unless it's really controversial, if the committee's going to support it with that kind of unanimity, I'm going to support it, I think they, they're doing a good job of analyzing all the projects coming before them, so I strongly support all of this, and I'm, I'm hoping more projects come, I'm very excited about the town hall, I hope we eventually get a new, uh, space up there rebuilt, theater space, because it's, they're dying, Chester has a little town hall, all white, and it's not done right, but they put a beautiful theater program in there all summer, and tons of people go into that community, to the restaurants, so I'm just saying, CPA brings people into the community, it'll bring people to the football. That's my speech.
I, um.
Who brings people?
I'd like to move this unless we have more.
Well, it's up to Councilor Kuzinski, I did provide a lot of the specifics, uh, things, and we do have, we do have time for, it can't go, I mean, I'll set, definitely set the public.
Yeah, we're not, we're not voting, we don't have to vote for it tonight.
No.
Vote on it the next meeting if you want.
What I'll do is I'll set a public hearing for the first meeting in September, that'll be the first Wednesday in September, and then we'll probably have one more subcommittee meeting, probably the thirteenth, August thirteenth, um, and we'll probably take a vote, that'll give, I, I think it's in fairness to the two councilors to go over the numbers and see if there's any other questions you have at that point, unless, you know, you feel you don't need that time, I mean, I.
I won't need it, but.
I haven't seen the report.
Right, that's what I said.
Until tonight.
Right, that's what I said.
I haven't had the time to really digest it, but I'm certainly leaning, given the arguments that are here.
But I mean, again, we're not, it's not like it's going to slow the process at all to.
If we vote on it next, next month.
Yeah, what about, do you need anybody back?
I'm not sure I need any other specific information, but I would like to have opportunity to hear additional, additional.
So we'll table the final vote until?
Yeah, we'll table the final vote, and what I'll do is, um, in between, if the councilors want anybody back, whether they want the, the school department back, or the Friends of Football back, or the athletic director, or, well, the mayor comes anyway, so we always got her back, uh, we'll, why don't we leave it there, we'll let them know, if not, we can discuss it among ourselves at that meeting and move it forward to the first meeting in September, that way we won't have to drag everybody back in the middle of August if, unless there's specific questions we have.
Unless there's something else to say.
Or you guys have, you know, you know, maybe you've come up with some new idea that you would.
I'll be coaching football that evening, if you'll like me back here, I'll be happy.
Bring your team.
That's a little intimidating.
He coaches the P-Boos, they're not that.
Really? It's very hard to say no to a kid in a football.
Yeah.
I'm voting against you, kid.
Well, obviously, we, we won't, we can't discuss it outside of the hearing, any of us, but if any of the councilors want anybody here, we'll get ahold of Jamie and, and Jamie can get ahold of whoever we want to come back, otherwise, the thirteenth, we'll discuss it amongst ourselves and move it to the first meeting in September, the first Wednesday in September, for the full city coming, okay?
Okay.
Um, sorry. The September meeting would be good to.
Plans have been kicking around on, on, if anyone wants a set, okay, please set.
Yeah, does anybody need a set of plans, do you need a set of plans to look at, or?
I think I'm okay with it.
Yeah, there's quite a bit in here.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's enough, but.
I think I've seen some downstairs.
What I would suggest, as the mayor, is, is that you do come though the first, I don't know what the first Wednesday is September, I can look at my phone, but that one would be important in case some of the other councilors, because of the size of the appropriation, some of the other councilors may have questions that night, it would be good to.
Be good to have.
Be good to have someone there that can answer specifics or whatever, that'd be the first Wednesday in September.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
We should probably get going.
We've got to start going on the salary.
Do we have information coming in?
We had some, Barbara gave us some limited information, uh, do you want me to make a request to Barbara?
Later, Vito.
Thanks, Vito, have a nice summer.
Vito, yeah, thank you for coming out there this summer.
Some hot summer, yeah.
I'd like information on the mayor's salary, when was the last time it was voted up? How long ago, and any comparisons for boards, committees, councilors to other similar communities, that would be great, because she can get that from the Clerks Association.
Yes, I know, last, uh.
If she can just put it down on paper, how much are we paying stipends to the planning board, zoning?
Who's getting?
I mean, I like to do it by comparison, if we're really in the middle, if, maybe we don't do one this week, but the only one I'm going to say right now I'm going to support is an increase in the mayor's salary, it's been years, I think, and I think that has to be debated and discussed, but other than that, I could go for a raise, but I don't think we should do that.
I definitely think we should look at all, all the salaries.
Oh, yeah, we'll look.
Well, we should look at them, but I'm, I'm, the only one that I'm, I'm really eager to see go up a little bit is the mayor's salary, and it doesn't affect Karen because she doesn't get, she has to run her reelections.
Right. Yeah, I will.
Because I think.
And every time you say.
The people say that.
Because people don't.
You're immediately, you're immediately.
It's the position, not the person, and it's not, not today, the next election.
Unfortunately, under, under Mike's term, people wouldn't give a raise to the position because they think, oh, he's going to just keep doing it, so I think now that we have a new mayor, they realize it may not be the same mayor, but I think we need to look at the position and the fact that it should be refunded, reefered, if we're not going to raise the salary except for every ten years, every eight years, we got to do it, it's time, and I know everybody's saying, oh, our budget's real tight, yeah, but this is a minor amount of money, it's thirty-five million dollar budget, and it's deserving.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get to Barbara in for the next meeting, because we, we should have a fairly quiet meeting on the football, we can really dig into that in the meeting in August the thirteenth.
If we can get some information.
Try to get as much information as I can.
And what about the ones that don't get some, do you think, have all of them?
Well, what I, what we did the last time was we looked at the stipends, and the other thing, I think it was Bob Harrison who did it, he asked the committees, you guys interested in the ones that don't have a stipend, do you want a stipend? And one of the things we talked about is do they have to pay babysitters to get here, do they have to pay transportation costs, can we give them a little bit of money to cover that kind of thing, mainly babysitting, but a lot of them didn't indicate that they needed it, so.
Because I know the licensing board had asked in the past, but I didn't know if you were going to look at ones that don't have stipends now, or consider them all.
No, it's all boards and committees, but we have to look at, we have to look at what each town, a lot of towns, like towns pay, and, um, I'd be, I'd be happy to give every committee a little bit so that if some, if, if you were going to appoint somebody, you could say, well, there's a little stipend, it'll cover your babysitting fees, and I think that would be worth it, and we're not, you know, a hundred bucks per member per year isn't a lot of money, it's not going to break the bank, so.
There are a lot of committees.
Okay.
There's a few less.
We think we refer to the finance director.
It's about four pages long.
Finance director, you might break the bank.
I'm just saying, you know, there's not like, about four pages long.
I was always interested in the ones that meet a lot and are very important.
It's a slippery slope too, where you.